Good evening, everybody. It's August 12th, meeting in the Board of Education. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. See if you've got your flag. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a regular meeting like the other ones this week. Can do a little bit more. Time now for public comment. Can we have anybody?
Nope, no one is in right now.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education special session on July 29th, 2020.
I'm so moved.
Okay. Any comments?
Bob, I think...
Yes?
Do I, I think I need some abstain because I wasn't able to make it, make it? Is that what I need to do?
Sure.
Okay.
Hello, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right. My internet has been so crazy. I fear a tree went down again today. So Kath, you're on.
Okay, I'll just share my screen quickly with you. Not where I wanted to start with the athletics, Bob. Actually, I'd like to, to start with, well, just, just so our Candace, who's from the YMCA, can, can answer any questions you might have and then, you know, and, and then leave the meeting. Dolphin Days currently has 20 students who are, will be potentially enrolled at the Brewster setting. They just have some, you know, some continued licensing steps that they need to go through. And I don't know when, when Kim presents or she can jump on to, if there's, has been any updates as of today. Because we have identified three rooms, as long as all three rooms are approved, they could have up to 40, accommodate up to 42 students in three classrooms with two people. So the YMCA, I mentioned to you, had reached out to me and we were, you know, wanting to provide an option for our staff members. And while I think, you know, Dolphin Days potentially could offer some childcare slots for our staff members, you know, as we're trying to be very, very careful about cohorts and, and mixing cohorts, I, we thought we would just kind of look at what the YMCA might be able to offer to us. And the reason I asked Candace, and Candace, if you could just introduce...
Kath, can I, can I interrupt you really quick? I'm sorry. I'm getting texts that this is not being available on YouTube. Ken, can you check that out? Hi.
Looking into it.
So I just, in my preliminary conversation with Michelle Rulnick, who's a District 13, former parent and is the director at the Y in, in Middletown, just talked about what would be necessary in order for a childcare setting to be set up by the YMCA in our district and that what kind of time it would take in order for the, the childcare setting in our school to be licensed or certified and that there were some other options that might help us to get that up and running if we needed to. And I had reached out to Michelle just to see whether she could give the board a little bit of information because it would involve some oversight on the port, part of the district as well as some liability. I, I have very little information about that. So Candace, if you wouldn't mind just giving me and the board a little bit of information about what that looks like for a district to kind of have oversight of the program prior to the Y being able to do that.
Yeah, so I can definitely do that. So, you know, I can't get into the fine details of exactly what the liability is because I'm not a lawyer or somebody who specializes, insurance specialist that specializes in liability, but having the district be overseeing it up until we can get licensed is something that we have done before with other school districts we work with. We just finished last Thursday with Middletown Public Schools, helping them with a childcare program they, they wanted for the summer in their elementary schools. And it was underneath their, their discretion or underneath their oversight. And so we signed a contract. We were a vendor for them and the service we were providing was childcare. We had to have all of our own insurance. We had to provide them with a certificate of insurance to show that, you know, we do still have like liability insurance for our staff. I mean, our staff are trained. We had to have background checks. Signed a contract with them. We could, I could provide your district with an example of the contract that Middletown has, if you don't already have a contract that you guys use with, with vendors for similar things. So I did speak to the Office of Early Childhood today about licensing and kind of get an idea of what they're thinking. They're really bombarded right now with new, new places trying to get licensed and existing districts, our existing childcare programs trying to add space, which is what we're doing in some of our other districts that we work in. It's just adding classrooms and adding space that it would be licensed. So, you know, the licenser said that if she was being super optimistic, she would think that we could possibly be licensed by mid-October. If she was being less optimistic, she's thinking closer to the end of the year. A lot of that has to do with, just with timing. We'd have to do some of the similar things that Dolphin Days is doing if they're currently undergoing licensing. So, you know, some of it would be very simple, some lead tests we'd have to find if, if you guys have or not, some radon tests, some pretty simple things, if not, we could get them done. The real time crunch comes down to when the Office of Licensing can come out and actually inspect and license us. So, timing is hard to say right now because it, we're in such weird times and the OEC is overwhelmed with people trying to get licensed. It costs, depending on what tests you guys already have and depending on the age of the school building and things like that, it costs right around $1,500 and no more than $2,000 to get a site licensed.
Candace, tonight, we, there was the governor's conference call and Beth By was, was talking and she said that there was just recent information from Commissioner Cardona about municipalities not having to be licensed. Did I mishear that or that there was some provision for municipalities?
Yeah, no, that is true. So, so when you run a camp or a childcare program underneath a municipality or a school district, you could be what's called license exempt, which is what this would be, would be for the beginning of this license exempt program. So, you know, any of your Parks and Rec who are running, you know, programs in summer camps or childcare, they're running license exempt, things like that. I mean, we would still do all of the things as far as our staffing background check, the training of our staff, the education of our staff. We would do everything the same because it's the right way to do things, you know, as, as we would be as if it was a licensed site up until the point where we would get licensed. So we would, we would operate all in the same ways because that's how we operate in our other three districts. It would no, be no reason to do it differently. It just comes down to getting that rubber stamp from the state saying this is, these locations within your school are considered licensed childcare spaces. Yeah.
All right, that's helpful. I just, if the board has any questions while Candace is with us and if, unless there's any opposition, I will continue to work with the Y to explore options. We just surveyed our staff. We sent something out on Tuesday just to get a preliminary idea of what kind of interest and need, interest and number and age of children, because the Y doesn't do infant or toddler care in the school setting according to, to Michelle. And so, you know, today I have, you know, about six staff members with 12, with 12 students. And I know Michelle said that child, school-aged children would be able to get some support with their distance learning if they were in the childcare setting.
Yeah, so when we, so, you know, to, to make it worthwhile in order to cover our costs, we would need to have 20 kids enrolled per day and we could do sort of ages three to 13 or three to 12, I think, 12 or 13. But we could go as young as three because that's considered preschool. Infant toddlers is under 36 months. So, yeah, so we did this, some of you may know this already, but the, the Middlesex Y provided emergency childcare starting on March 30th going until June 19th for children whose parents were first responders, essential personnel, et cetera. We offered that at the YMCA in Middletown. And at the time, those kids were doing distance learning. Obviously, that was a little bit different because it was more, you know, crisis, you know, last minute kind of learning, I guess. But we did provide them support with all of their Google classrooms and seesaws and all those different platforms they were using, made sure they were on any Google calls they had to be on, all those things. So yes, we would provide them with support to make sure. We can't guarantee anything. I mean, we, we struggled a little bit with some of the platforms that kids were using because once they would submit their assignment, we couldn't see it anymore. So we would say to the kids, well, did you submit your assignment? And they're like, yep. And then their parents find out they didn't and we're like, uh. So there was a little struggle around that. But, but we do do our best to make sure that kids are, and we kind of set the day up to match whatever the school wants it to be, along with providing the enrichment and the, you know, physical activity and stuff to, you know, the kids aren't sitting staring at the computer screen the whole time. But we would, yeah, we would need 20, 20 children per day to be enrolled in the program in order to, a minimum of 20 in order to make it financially feasible.
Okay, that's, that's helpful.
Kath.
Yeah, we do sliding, we do have a sliding scale of our fees. If, for families making up to $80,000 a year, we do provide financial assistance. And then we also help families apply for and receive Care for Kids, which is state funding to help with childcare costs. And we did find out from the federal government about two days ago, I think, Beth, OEC announced that the federal government's going to allow the Care for Kids money to be used for full day care. Normally during the school year for school-aged children, you can only use that funding to help cover your before and after care costs. But the federal government said, yes, you can start using that towards a full day to help cover, cover when children are doing their hybrid learning. You, it, they're just very clear that it can't be done if we're providing instruction. But since we wouldn't be providing instruction, we'd be supporting them learning whatever the teachers are teaching, then we can, they can help use that funding. So there would be some options for teachers who had financial difficulties covering the costs.
I think that, you know, childcare has been one of the most critical areas of need across the state. And once so many schools selected the hybrid model, it, it in some respects just exacerbated that, that issue. So Bob, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the cost was per student.
So it's going to be right around for a full day of care for the days when they're hybrid, it'd be right around $45 per day, per student. And there is some state level work happening around this. We had a call with our Middletown mayor today and he actually had a governor's call tonight. It was being discussed in the governor's call because this is a statewide problem that, that parents need care for their children when they're not in the classroom, quality care, safe care. And no one budgeted for this, no one expected this, nobody, you know, this is extra money for everybody to have to pay. And, and so there was definitely some statewide discussion. In the spring, there was some philanthropic dollars that helped out to cover the cost, especially for childcare, for healthcare workers, first responders. So we're not sure if that same philanthropic money will come forth again or if, you know, there was some discussion around some other options, but there's a lot of work being done throughout the state. And we're doing a lot at the Middlesex Y to advocate for, for some sort of support because parents, you know, this is financially difficult on them and, and we don't want people making less than good choices with, with who provides care for their kids because there's, they feel stuck because they can't afford it, you know. I think it's hard when, you know, you, you may end up having to have somebody provide care for your kids who is, that you trust, you know, a grandparent or a neighbor or something, but, you know, will they have the ability to help them with that schoolwork? And if they can't help them with the schoolwork, you know, if that's two or three days a week, I don't know what your hybrid model is going to be, but two or three days a week when they're not really getting any help all day, you know, that's, that's going to be difficult for the kids and teachers. So we, we want to make sure that they're in care where we can provide that assistance. So.
Thanks, Candace. And of course, we obviously want that for all the kids in our district as well as our staff members' children. And if, and if it assists us in, in keeping staff members consistently in our schools and teaching rather than having to take a leave, that's, that's what we want to do. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it and let Michelle know that I'll be in touch with her.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. For your meeting.
Thanks. I thought everybody could use a little bit of good news. We met today as an administrative team and, you know, we were, because of the storm, we are absolutely were three days behind in terms of our, the breakneck pace of the work that we're doing just by virtue of the fact that so many of us didn't have power. But so today, when we were together working on our professional development for staff coming back along with myriad other issues, Tom Ford gave me the update and really just such a shout out to the committee that worked on both the Lyman and the Memorial playscapes. Lyman's equipment is going to be delivered and installed on August 24th, which is just fantastic. Deb today was selecting the items for the playscape at Memorial, paying special attention to various ADA equipment and they will be ordering by the end of August. Something that I didn't mention here is that we're, and are basically off the record conversations with the teachers' union for the creation of a memorandum of agreement. We'll be having our third meeting with the, with the teachers' union tomorrow afternoon at 3:30. Andrew and Bob, I will send you an invitation. We're just working on the times for that. And I have my second meeting with the support staff union to begin to talk about the MOA with them. And then, as you know, we have six bargaining units, so that will be work that needs to be completed in the course of the next 23 days, which is how many days we have until the first day of school. Our athletics, we just found out this afternoon, some of you may have seen this on the news, that the CIA plans to continue with their fall schedule that they had tentatively put out at the end of July. I actually, just before I got on the, joined the meeting, I just quickly cut and pasted from an email, the email that I got from the C I A C. And I think this is a good time for us to have the discussion about athletics because I know that this is a topic that we did want to discuss, you know, under the reopening considerations that we have. So let me minimize this so you can see this a little bit better. Yeah, let me just move this. There we go.
Kath, while you're bringing that up, just wanted to tell you, right before I signed in, I got a news flash that the ECAC has, the Big East Athletic Conference has canceled all fall sports. And they may run them in the spring, but, so like Yukon will have no fall sports this year.
So as you can see, the CIA stand on this, which includes football beginning on August 17th, is that the health data, they believe continues to support fall sports. So I know this was a topic that Andrew specifically asked to, to bring up under the, under the, you know, the main topic of reopening. Missy also had asked to discuss this in particular as we're, we're moving forward with a model that talks about cohorting as a way, as a, as a mitigating effort in terms of COVID-19 and that the, that when we're talking about continuing with sports, especially contact sports, that it seems that the, we will be having a board sanctioned activity that diminishes the, the kind of maintaining cohorting as a way to diminish the, the spread of the virus. So, you know, I just, I know that both Andrew and Missy wanted to talk about this, so I'd like to pause to let that happen.
Missy, you're, you're welcome to go first.
Gee, thanks. So, I mean, I, I expressed my concern back, I think it was June or July, particularly about football in regards to the co-op and bringing, you know, three schools together or however many schools we have, I'm not even sure. And just, you know, how that was bringing, you know, kids into our school that don't go to our school. And then people have said, well, it's not as different than any other sports. But I just feel like football is such a high-risk sport and that I just feel like we're, we really need to be concentrating on education right now and that, you know, our job is to provide kids with the best education that we can. And I just feel like it's going to put undue, just stress on the system that, you know, if a kid in the other school gets COVID, is that going to shut us down? But it's also, I just, it's not helping with the cohorts. And then I've had a couple of parents reach out to me specifically about middle school sports in that if we are following through with the hybrid model, how are they going to get their children to practice on the days that they are not attending school? So I really won't express my, I don't know. I'd like to hear what other people have to say before I say what I think, but Andrew, go ahead.
Missy, I just wanted to let you know that we're really talking about intramurals at the middle school rather than interscholastic at this point, that we feel that that's, you know, grouping kids by cohort and having an intramural on the days that they're, they're present in school seems like a much better idea. And I, I believe that there are other schools who are doing that as well, so.
So would that be them just kind of playing against each other, not, no transportation to other schools or anything like that? Yeah. I think that that's a much better, a much better plan. It's just safer. I mean, we have no idea what we're dealing with and.
We agree. And Scott and Todd and I have just discussed that recently and we'll be sure to get some information out to middle school parents about that.
Thank you.
So, thanks, Missy, for, for talking about this first. I, I definitely agree with you with regards to contact sports in the fall. I think several concerns. One is the, and you'd mentioned this already, is the incongruity of kind of cohorting and, you know, potentially what we adopt from a, from a mass policy moving forward and how contact sports would, in essence, kind of violate those particular policies. And I'm not, I just don't see how we can allow, you know, a portion of our, our school or a segment or an activity to, to not be in line with other aspects of the policy moving forward. I, you know, I have a lot of safety concerns because of the contact nature of it. I, I agree that our, our district as well is a little bit unique in the fact that it is a co-op and when we have several different schools participating. And I think that increases the risk both to us and to other school districts, some from the football standpoint, but I think there are other contact sports that we also need to consider as well. I'm, I'm, I had heard, was hopeful that the C I A C was going to take a stronger position. And it looked like there were some rumors earlier this week that maybe they were going to delay things into the spring. And I think, you know, I think that that's a more reasonable approach is to kind of wait until the spring and not necessarily cancel all, all contact sports for, for the year, but some type of move to, for a reevaluation or reassessment on springtime. As, you know, it, as a physician, I just find it really hard for me to support at this time any contact sport where we're having kids, you know, be face-to-face in really kind of risky situations. I understand this is not, you know, may not be a particular popular move, but I think, I think it's kind of recognizing the C I C language that's come out today. I would kind of ask that we, as a board, move forward with delaying contact sports into the springtime with a reassessment at that time. I think that's kind of what is demanded by, we have the evidence by potential alignment with our mass policy and everything else. So that's, that's kind of where I stand on the issue.
Andrew, and I did reach out to our legal counsel just to kind of get the parameters. Does the board, you know, does the board have the right to cancel athletics or delay them? And the answer is yes. What I asked him to, to, you know, kind of explore further is the, are there C I A C sanctions? Are those, and perhaps are those sanctions just, you know, within the context of COVID? Have those been, you know, have there been any changes to that? Are there any Title IX ramifications if we're making a change to one sport as opposed to another? So, you know, we may be able to spend a little time talking with Peter tomorrow after we, after we meet with the union to get some more information on that. So I'm interested to hear though what other people on the board feel regarding this topic.
I guess I'll go. I, I agree. I would be really cautious to pick one or two sports over others. That would, I would just probably request that if we were to make this decision, that it would be for all four fall sports instead of just choosing, picking and choosing which ones we feel are not safe over another. I totally agree with the football, especially with having kids from other towns. I'm equally concerned about volleyball where other kids are supposedly going to be coming into our school to continue to play. I think that's what the athletic director mentioned when he was with us a couple of weeks ago, that the plan was to still have them play as normal, which would be for the rival teams to also come into our gyms and play. So I guess that would be my request is that we just, we, if we're going to make a decision, it's for all the fall sports.
I just think it's about safety and that's really what it comes down to. And as much as I think we all want to see, you know, everything about this whole situation go back to normal, this is, I think, just one of those things that is, you know, again, like, like Andrew said, it's not going to be a popular decision, but I think it is the best decision to make to keep all of our kids safe. And then, listen, who knows what's going to happen? If, you know, if they complain in the spring, they complain in the spring and that's great. And if at any point new information comes out, I think that we, as a board, would definitely change our minds and give the green light. But I think at this point, safety first.
Anyone else?
If we decide to hold off on the sports until the spring, what's going to happen with the intramurals that were scheduled or were going to be played in, in the middle school? Will those still happen?
Yes. I think they could. I don't see why an intramural sports with our own students couldn't happen. I don't see why an intramural sports with our own students couldn't happen, you know, and we wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an intramural contact sport either.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, as I think about it, I mean, it would be great to have the kids get back to playing sports, but what does concern me is outsiders coming into the school, not only on the football team, but when they're actually playing games, there's a whole bunch of extra people coming in for just the games. And we're working so hard to keep the cohorts together in the school and intact, and that's just going to add another completely unpredictable element that we have absolutely no control over. So I'm really concerned about that.
So we can prohibit fans and spectators from attending games?
True, but you still have the other team that comes in as well, and coaches and.
I don't think that it is wise to engage in sports activities that compromises the cohort system. And I think at this point, I would, whether or not we had the authority, vote for a motion limiting sports to what actually seems safe. And if that's nothing, if that's how we want to go with that, then that's okay. But I don't think, as a board, we should go with the CIAC.
Are we allowed to have a vote if it's not on the agenda?
I think we should wait until next week, until you have a little bit more information on, you know, just a little bit more guidance.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Football's supposed to start on the 16th, and that's Sunday.
That's practice, I think.
Yeah, I had some comments, if I may.
Sure.
So, I don't know why my screen just shut off. All right, so, first of all, we would not have the option of just delaying to the spring because that that's would require all of the other schools we play against to also delay to the spring. So we can't unilaterally say we'll delay it to the spring. It's not a delay decision, it's a cancel or move-forward decision. So I think we got to keep that in mind. I'm not sure that I'm prepared to make a decision right now until we discuss two other issues that I think are paramount to this. One, that Andrew had discussed earlier, which is the face mask policy, until we understand what the face mask policy is and how that would or would not, you know, these sports, how they would or would not affect that, I think is extremely important for us to understand that. The other thing I need to understand is, for instance, and I, I'm not going to pick, I'm picking SportsA. A member of the team gets COVID. Do we then basically bench the entire team at home for the rest of the, you know, to use a sports phrase, for the rest of the, you know, two weeks or whatever, to like, we have to quarantine everyone from the team? What would the policies look like around that? If there's a member of one of the other teams that we just played that comes down with COVID, do we quarantine our teams? If, if we start, what, so I guess one of the things I really don't have a handle on right now, and I think it's something we need to understand, is how are we going to handle the school, the school building, all of the students, when and if one of our children gets COVID? And in, to make a decision about the sports without understanding that, I feel is a bit of a conflict. And then the last thing, because football is a co-op sport, I share a similar concern that we're introducing players from outside of our district into our district on a daily basis to practice. I do have that concern. Now, having had that concern, have we done any outreach to the Boards of Education and the other two communities to see what their view is on their students coming into our school districts and playing with our students? You know, what is, what is their feeling on that? So I'd like to understand those things, I'd like to get a little more information on those three items before I am prepared to make a decision. But if the rest of you are prepared to make a decision, then have at it. And then the last point, I had one more point, and I'm trying to remember what it was. Oh, regarding canceling all fall sports versus just one and picking and choosing one, the CAIC guidelines specifically list each sport by its risk category. Football is the only fall sport that's listed in the high-risk category, whereas all of the other fall sports are listed in the moderate category, moderate or low. So, you know, that's just one of the bases we could look at in terms of the CIIC guidelines. But I'm giving you that as, not as a point of view, but as a point of information. So that's, that's where I'm at right now, so.
Bob, to one of your questions about, you know, have we talked about to, you know, other districts in the shoreline area? We have a meeting, Brian, Todd Petronio, Athletic Director, and I on Monday afternoon with the other superintendents, athletic directors, and principals in the shoreline. And I think we were, you know, waiting to see what CIA had to say, and then we will get together as a regional group to discuss this further. The other question that you had about, you know, what are the guidelines? We just received the guidelines for how we are to respond when an individual is, you know, there's a couple of scenarios. Somebody has COVID-19 symptoms but hasn't had close contact to a person diagnosed with COVID. Someone has symptoms and has close contact, and an individual does not have COVID-19 symptoms but has had close contact with someone. And close contact, as you know, is defined as being within six feet of another person for 15 minutes or longer, or being exposed to kind of the droplets, for instance, if you were coughed on or sneezed on. So, you know, and of course, we're thinking about that in the classroom setting, but I think if you apply that in a sport situation, in terms of close contact, six feet or less for 15 minutes or more, I think your question about the potential scenario of an entire team kind of being taken out for 10 days, or, or at the least 10 days, 10 to 14 days.
Yeah, I, that's kind of what I was thinking might happen, but, so then it becomes, then it becomes, we've got the other school districts, the other districts that are in our co-op. One of the students in their school gets ill, has had contact with one of the football players on our team. Does that then just translate to our entire team, or just to the team members from that school? You know, that's where, that's where it gets a little dicey, I think, in terms of looking at cohorts and stuff like that. But anyways, but thank you, thank you for that update.
I also think what you're talking about is risk, and is the risk, is the potential risk worth the, the potential benefit of the sport? And I think we all understand the importance of athletics for students, and I just think that this provides an entirely different backdrop for us as we're looking at the potential risk to kids.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with you on that. It's clearly, if there wasn't a risk to the safety or health of the students, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. So clearly, I think there is a potential, and how great it is. The other piece of it, that I know we talked about at one of our other meetings, was, okay, how are we going to handle the music program? Are we going to allow the wind instruments? Or not allow the wind instruments? Is it only going to be music theory that we're teaching? So I think, you know, that's another area that we need to have, I think, a little bit more, or at least understand what the plan is as we move forward towards a school opening, so.
So that, more specific guidelines on masks, band and chorus are anticipated on Friday. But we did have, we've had some great conversations with DPH around masks and, you know, just kind of the exemptions, the quality of the masks, where to take mask breaks, when to take max mask breaks, where to store a mask when you're, you know, having a snack or, or lunch. So we're hoping for that by Friday.
I'd just like to remark that, that, can you hear me? Okay, good. That CDs, the latest guidelines, Appendix 5 or Addendum 5, which was about detecting and handling people who have symptoms, or with or without testing, deal not at all with the question of when you've got somebody positive, what does that mean for the entire rest of the school? I see no guidance in there, for example, about what happens if a team member becomes positive. Do you shut down the entire cohort just for that person or for the other persons? So we're, we are still being left twisting in the wind in something that's really essential, which is the next step. I believe we know we have no testing resources, but the state has not so far given us any guidelines about what to do outside of handling the person who was infected. That's me bitching, but it's related to the football issue, and other sports especially.
I guess from the sense, it seems like we should bring this up next week for a vote, Missy, with some specifics from Cath on what are the other conference members doing? What are our co-op schools, what are their concerns and issues? They have busing and a lot of transportation issues. We know we've closed the locker room. So, you know, I think I'd like to hear more from our attorneys on the relationship with sanctions from CIIC, and a few other things like that, because I think we'll get into some complex issues there if we're not prepared ahead of time.
You know what, Bob? I think that may be a topic of conversation at tomorrow's Board Chair meeting with Cabe.
He's speaking tomorrow at the Board Chair.
Exactly right, and, and I think that with that meeting, we'll glean some more information, not only from CIAC, but from board chairs and superintendents throughout the state.
Good. So, just as a point of clarification, I'm just trying to get the understanding of this. I just don't understand how the district, regional board would not have the authority to be able to say the weather our kids can play sports or not, particularly when we have the health and safety of our kids in consideration. I understand that people want, you know, to have some consensus on this, but this, to me, is not a consensus issue. This is, you know, a personal belief that this is the right thing to do from the safety aspect, and I, just as a personal standpoint, I don't care what other districts are doing. And I personally, I don't even really care what the state says. So I just wanted to throw that out there as kind of a point of consideration for moving forward.
Yeah, I understand that. I just think that we need to know all the answers to those questions as well. You know, I think the risk of football is pretty high. I think there are other sports that are going on now. I know soccer is being played now, baseball is being played now by Little League and other soccer clubs, and I don't know the impact that that's having on their players or not, but I know they're getting played. But I just think that we can bring it up for a vote. We'll probably get lots of concern over the next week, to know what the other schools are thinking in our conference, what does it mean from CIAC, what does it mean from our attorney, if we were to back out of some of these other commitments.
And I don't, you know, I don't feel that I'm, I'm looking to see what everybody else is doing. I think I, I'm getting the sense from our board that they feel that football is dangerous and not worth the risk, and goes against what we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, and that is what I will share when I meet with the shoreline, the other shoreline schools on Monday. And not that we've voted, and not that we've had an exhaustive conversation about it, but that that's a serious consideration of this board.
Yeah, I would agree, Kath, that if you presented it that way, I'd agree, I'd agree with you on that. I think, and Andrew, I'm not saying I'm going to let the other boards dictate what we would do, but I would be curious if they're having the same types of discussions and misgivings that we might be having. I'm more interested in the viewpoints on not just football, but more, it did raise the point about the other sports as well. So, I mean, I'd like to understand how other, other boards are viewing the other sports as well as the football, so not to just single out football, but football is, as I said, as my opening statement, is the only fall sport that the CIAC says is high-risk. So, CIIC is admittedly saying this is a high-risk sport. So anyways, that's, that's, I'd agree with you, Kath, on that.
Just kind of by way of talking about how we got to the decision to go to the hybrid model, because that's what happened prior to the storm last week, that, as you know, what the, in giving us the opportunity to make a decision to do other than full in-person return to school, which is what we were directed to do based upon the health data. We have an Addendum 4, it looks at the leading and secondary indicators by county that we would, that we are asked to look at in terms of reopening. What we've been told clearly by the governor and the commissioner, that they believe that the statewide data favors and supports in-person full return to school. The additional six considerations have to do with our physical space, you know, what kind of classroom space do we have? What do, what kind of furniture do we have? How, you know, when I look at the physical space, can we achieve the social distancing that's recommended, the three to six feet? What is our outdoor space? Do we have the potential to create some outdoor learning areas? Are entrances and exits not something that we're concerned about in terms of moving students back and forth in the building? And then just our overall population and what the density would, would be like. And again, this is for all, all schools to consider. Cohorting, you know, probably, obviously, you know, masks, social distancing, proper hygiene, and cohorting are some of the practices that are, you know, that are required for us, and can we keep our, the cohorts of students as, kind of, keep the integrity of cohorting as, as, as high as possible? We will be starting with our parent square self-screening. It'll be an app that parents can use on their phone for their students. When the state talks about the compliance with self-screening, what they're talking about is really, and again, we haven't hit this point yet because we're not back in about is really, and again, we haven't hit this point yet because we're not back in school. What is the level, the frequency of students or staff who are coming to school, you know, exhibiting COVID symptoms? The HVAC, obviously, huge concern and cleaning and disinfecting. Cleaning and disinfection, not an area that we're concerned about whatsoever. HVAC is, again, an area we feel very confident about. Both Sue and Jimmy were a part of a webinar recently that was put on with the State Department of Education as well as DPH and came away feeling very, very good about our compliance with the recommendations there. Self-screening, you know, anyone who has worked 12 months, we've just used a basic checklist and it's not something that we actually check, but all our 12-month people have been reporting that they're using that self-screening measurement. Cohorting, I've talked to you about that before and how we're, how we're managing the cohorting. And, you know, in the elementary school, a little bit easier to maintain a stable cohort if students are just kind of staying with their classroom. And again, if students are traveling on the bus, receive special education services or get into other groups, for instance, in the middle school with world language or unified arts, we'll see other cohorts. Part of the reason that I believe that moving to hybrid was the best decision for District 13, in part, had to do with our physical space as we were, you know, quite frankly, scrambling to look at all of our available physical space, what kind of furniture we have. You know, desks are kind of an old-fashioned piece of furniture in an elementary school, but our, our tables for students certainly don't allow for two students to sit at a table and be six feet apart. And so that, you know, that was one of the determining factors for me. Additionally, as I look at kind of psychologically what's happened for our students as well as our staff and how do we safely and confidently return to our buildings where, where, you know, I was meeting with our administrative staff and as of today, we have been out of school for 151 days. And in 23 days, we will open our doors. So that amount of time, essentially, we have been away from the school building for about an entire school year, almost 180 days. So we can think about coming back, we can plan for coming back, we can follow protocols, but until we are actually in that physical space and we are monitoring and facilitating all of the things that will help to, to support the safety and wellbeing of our students and staff, I don't think we're, we're going to confidently be able to do that until we bring students back. And if we bring back 50% of our students, it allows for what I think is most important is greater attention from the adults in the building to students because there are fewer students at any one time in front of them. It allows them to really support students and to, to gain their own confidence, whatever their role is, as they're, as they're considering so many options. It's, or so many variables, not just, not just teaching. So that was, you know, something that I would have talked about last week had we been together. And as you know, the hybrid model, while it achieves all of those positive things that I've talked about, it certainly has myriad challenges. And this, I believe we've shared before, where we have our cohort A, which are students whose last names begin with A through M, who will be in-person all day Monday and all day Tuesday, while students who are, whose last names begin with N through Z will be in distance learning. On Wednesday, there'll be no students in the building, but there'll be a variety of ways that we're supporting students. This also allows teachers the time to do the significant and extreme amount of planning that will need to be done. And wow, look at this column was kind of big here. Sorry about that, folks, with the cut and paste. And then the exact opposite happens on Thursday and Friday. Staff was sent an outline of the description of what the expectations are of them in the hybrid model. Parents were given an overview in the update that they received from me yesterday. And just moving quickly, Addendum 5, that Victor was talking about that we just got the other day, gives us the, the guidelines in this area for how to deal with, with these various scenarios. And again, we will be getting more information on this. I have a meeting with our school nurses on Friday afternoon where we'll be talking about really the applicability in our district and how we will handle and manage these areas. Yesterday, we got a frequently asked question document that I will share with the board. One of the topics that was in the FAQ and also we had a statewide health meeting with DPH and SDE on Tuesday, where we talked at length about mask requirements and the fact that the requirement will be for all students to, to wear a mask and that the exceptions really are very, very few, including things like lacerations or burns to the face, COPD or emphysema, extreme respiratory issues that would probably preclude a student or a staff from coming to school in the first place. One of the epidemiologists was talking about the types of acceptable masks. There's been some recent information on whether or not neck gaiters are really acceptable for students. And so he was about to hit send on the research he'd done and the recent neck gaiter publication has him looking a little bit more into that. His feeling was the best mask is the mask that a child will keep on his face for the longest period of time without fidgeting with it and that, that, you know, kind of the candle test. If you can blow a candle out through your mask, the mask is probably too thin. I believe I shared with you before that there is an exemption for students in pre-K. Our threes and fours do not need to wear masks. And at this time, kindergarteners still need to wear masks. We will be receiving some more guidance as though, when we talk about shifting from hybrid to either, well, most likely to a full reopening and how we would gradually do that. There will be sharing some more best practices for teaching in the hybrid model, some more information about why we would be using county rather than town data for our health metrics. And just more information on how to support students who have chosen remote learning, who will be out all day, every day. But we do, as a, as a school district, have an, have an obligation to support our students and not simply say, you need to go to the learning hub. And at this time, our, I don't know why I put staff assessments, because it's not staff assessments, it's student assessments in the form of the S back at this time are not put on hold. And we just got Addendum 6 before I signed on to this meeting about the reopening guidelines for educating students with disabilities. So I'll be sharing that with you in greater detail.
Kath, I have, I have one question that I don't think has been addressed or answered, and maybe Andrew can pitch in here a little bit, but how, when, when we talk about, we have procedures when we know someone is exhibiting COVID symptoms, how are we going to differentiate between COVID, cold, flu, or allergies? I, I mean, we're coming up on cold and flu season and we're coming up on fall allergy season. So how, how do we know the difference?
So that, that was a topic of conversation at our, today, or on Tuesday. And, you know, Bob, I think that the general way to answer that is erring on the side of caution. It's the, the responsibility of our nurses in making those decisions. They will err on the side of caution. And, you know, even for summer school, we had, we've had parents who have called and said, like, you know, oh, he's kind of sneezing and coughing a little bit. And we've said, why don't you let him stay home? At this point, it's just, you know, it's not worth the risk.
Yeah.
And we have options for educating students when they're home. It's not like we're, if a child were to stay home, that they have no access whatsoever to an education.
No, I, I understand that. But all, yeah, but I guess what I'm foreseeing is that, given that we will err on the side of caution, which is the appropriate thing to do, we're going to end up with quite a large number at home at any given time. And if those statistics go back into the county statistics, I think we'll be looking at remote learning pretty quickly, which is just my, my guess, but I.
Well, I'll definitely share more information as, as I have it and after I meet with our nurses. And, you know, that's our preliminary guideline though, is, you know, I think it's hard to tell when a cough and a sneeze, you know, I think there are some symptoms that are so clear, the loss of, of taste or smell seems to be really strongly correlated with COVID. The fever of 100.4, it's just, it's not worth the risk. It might be something else. It's not worth the risk to have staff or students in the building. And we had a lengthy discussion about that as a team of administrators today about what that impact is on staff members, Bob, who wake up in the morning, they do the self-certified checklist and, and wonder whether they should be coming into the building.
Kath, do we have any idea based on like prior numbers from, from last year with regards to like sick calls and people out with just colds? Do we have any information to get even a somewhat reasonable number about what that potentially would mean for the number of staff members that would be out at any one given time?
You know, we don't have, I mean, we, we definitely have our attendance data, what people's absence, absences were due to.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard to tell. And we also have something that's called family sick. So, you know, if you have a child who's sick at home, you, you have the option of having a family sick day as well. So it's, it's just hard to say.
If a child is home, they can still participate in the online learning, even if it's not their day, and then that wouldn't be considered an absence, correct?
Correct. Right.
Yeah. And then I had a question, going back to like the very first thing we talked about. So with her information of it needing to be 20 children to make it worth their time, is this something that we could open up to town member, like, not town members, but like employees of Durham and Middlefield perhaps? Just to maybe make it happen when it might not happen? And I, like, you answered a lot of the questions that I had, like, will they do infants and things like that? Because those are probably like, I don't know, I'm just speculating, but those are probably the teachers that really, really need the care. And then are the first two days, the third and fourth, are they going to be full days?
Yes, we're going to have them as full days. We had originally, when we thought we were going back full-time with 100% of our students, we had talked about having those as shortened days. My feeling, Missy, is I'd like to, at this point in the school year, as much time in school as possible. And so I would, you know, like to put on next week's calendar or next week's agenda that we vote to be in school on September 25th, the Durham Fair Day. Let's take advantage of every possible in-person learning day we can at this point in the school year. But so long, short answer, yes, full days.
Yeah, I agree. And I mean, when I spoke to you the other day, like, I'm, I'm so hopeful that within the next, like, after we kind of see what we're dealing with, that at least maybe the younger kids and the kids that receive special services can, can get back, you know, hopefully by the beginning of October, if not sooner. But then if that's not the case, and we do stay hybrid, I was just wondering if, you know, those professional development days when the kids get out so early, if that can be rescheduled to the Wednesday when they're already home?
Yeah, we just, actually, we just did some modifications to the calendar and Christine had suggested to me that we kind of do a, you know, kind of the month at a glance for parents with a lot of those details, just it's cohort A, this is your day. And so we started looking at the PD days that are coming up and said exactly that. It just makes sense to put them on a Wednesday rather than, you know, a day that they're scheduled. So I think we need some, we probably will have a few more calendar votes as we navigate this, this time. And that we've already talked about and have scheduled, some of our students who have special needs will be coming four days a week. And we're talking about what the plan would be if we were to move back into full-time 100%, how we begin to transition students back into a full reopening if we get to that, or when we get to that point. Yeoman's effort, everybody. I, you know, I cannot, I just cannot stress enough the outstanding work of everyone who is, is working on this. And it's, it's, you know, it basically is 24/7 because you're, you're not really sleeping either, but what an incredible administrative team and the groups of staff, the reopening plans that went home to parents. We brought staff members in to read, to meet with principals to finalize those. And now we're really like, we are turning from, you know, we've been gone from problem identification to planning and, and now we're moving into the implementation phase. So 23 days till, till reopening and we're excited to, to have our students come back really and to welcome them into a safe school environment.
So, so Kath, looking down the road past the opening and transitioning, if we go from hybrid, if and when we transition from hybrid to full-time, should we be looking now to possibly add a couple of additional teachers to some of the schools to cover teachers' absences, to look at maybe when we go back, opening additional classrooms if we have classroom space? You know, so that we can reduce the size of the classrooms so that we can still maintain some of the distance? I, I think those are things that we've already started to look at, but we as a board would need to start to discuss because of the financial implications and.
Sure. Yeah, let me, let me try to send you a grid this weekend of what we're, what we're looking at. I mean, and even today, when we met, I was like, okay, what college kids are out there who are not going back to school, that are learning remotely, that we could get in as, you know, as support or as subs? We're posting for kind of anticipated openings. I know we're talking about increasing the sub rate to see if we can get, you know, more substitutes as well, but I can, I can kind of give you the big overview of that. And by next week, we will have a more definitive understanding of who's coming back for our staff, which, Bob, as you've, as you know, that this is, when I look at, you know, maybe who, because of a compromised immune system, is, is not going to come back, will either be on a leave or be working remotely. That's on a good day. That will be 100%. And the nature of this is that, you know, if we string two good days in a row together, you know, I'm going to be feeling like Superman. So those scenarios of what happens when and who's, who's out there, and we're all in the same boat, trying to get as many kind of backup people as we can.
Yeah, yep. No, I truly. Yeah, yep. No, I, I truly understand it. I mean, 23 days from now, you're going to be starting the school, you're already exhausted. In a normal school year, you know, you have a plan, you've done that plan for how many years in a row? And something always comes up.
Right.
Now you've got a plan you've never exercised before and stuff is going to come up. I, I just, I just, I say a prayer every night before I go to sleep, hoping, you know, you know, it's going to be a challenge. So understand, we, we appreciate all that you, the staff and the teachers are going to be doing to try to get us back to school in a safe and efficient manner. So, you know, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. I actually asked our health director on Tuesday if he would run this, the two other superintendents who are in our health district and I through some kind of like tabletop exercises, just like real time, like throw some stuff out at us, this scenario comes up. But because partly I want to really make sure that I have a really comprehensive checklist for if this happens, then, then this. So, all right, I'm done for now and we'll, we'll send you any updates that happen between now and Friday on the weekend.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other questions? Missy, I know that the town of Durham has asked us to consider having, you know, before and after care, daycare for their employers as well. So to answer your question, that the town probably has some.
Okay.
If they might enjoy it. Somebody talking? Anyway, uh, so I think in terms of the athletics, if we can schedule a vote on that for next week, hopefully that will give us the most information we have to deal with it. I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of interest, information from our community about it as well. The, uh, the next item on the agenda is the possible vote on the school reopening model. I've looked at the board chairs throughout the state and most of them are voting to endorse the superintendent's plan and administration's plan, uh, so that it's, uh, we don't have to act every time there's a change, we can, the flexibility to occur. Uh, I think we're going to be a dynamic document with lots of changes on almost a weekly basis. So my suggestion is that we vote to support our Catholic plan and make sure that she knows that the board is behind her.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
So to your point, Bob, are we endorsing this plan? Are we, and are we giving support to the superintendent and making decisions in the future as well?
I think to endorse the plan and to make decisions in accordance with amendments that come up on a periodic basis.
So both.
So both. Norma?
I just was going to second or third it. And I just wanted to also say that I think Kath's doing a great job, the whole team. Thank you for everything.
So if we're going to vote for a motion, should we hear what the motion is?
Yeah.
That's going to show up in the minutes.
And, and yeah, I, I would love some specification around this. Cause I, while I support our current decision to move into a hybrid model to start, I, I don't know, I'm not sure if I can lend support to whatever may come after that. And so I, I personally, I would rather vote as, I, personally, I don't think it's necessary that we vote. I think that's been illustrated by the state. And I, I think that it's been conveyed that this should really be a superintendent decision and that we can support that component. But I think there's some, there are some particular considerations down the line that I'm going to have stronger opinions on about, about safety and everything else from a, from a child standpoint. So I, I, that's.
Do you like to refrain the motion? I lost the voice.
Victor, are you speaking? It was. Okay.
Bob, you want to try to, uh, make a motion that we approve the, to endorse the current reopening plan that developed by superintendent administration? And. And leave it at that?
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to endorse the hybrid plan as presented by the superintendent this evening. What was the other language, Bob, that I missed any? I'll, I'll second that.
No, wait. Bob, you need to say for opening. Otherwise, we are implicitly putting our finger in, in advance of changes.
For the school opening.
School opening.
Yep. Okay. So the motion is to endorse the superintendent's hybrid model plan for school reopening as presented this evening and any amendments that might occur between now and the opening, right? So that would be the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 You oppose? Thank you very much.
I abstain.
And the next item on the agenda is the committee, the policy committee, if it's on that.
Well, the policy committee obviously didn't meet last week. We have a Cape, uh, mask policy that came forward a couple of weeks ago when we met. And since then, I have received some, um, additions, corrections, suggestions. And I would, at this point in time, we can consider this a first read, but I would like to convene the policy committee meeting for next Wednesday at six. We can talk about those changes as well as a couple of other items that were on the agenda from the last time. And, and I'd like to stay ahead of the curve with policies because it's not going to get any easier. So that would be my suggestion.
I agree with that. I, I, um, what time are we meeting next week as the board of education, the full board?
So you, we've been meeting at six. This was just a regular meeting and that's why.
Which is why it was at seven. So should we meet at 5:30, Norm?
That's fine. Yes, I, I, uh, didn't realize, I, I did realize this was a regular meeting and, uh, but I consistently look at the times because they always seem to change in my calendar. So I think at 5:30 would be fine. I think we can wrap this up in 30 minutes and, uh,
Yep.
Uh, have some brief discussion with the full board, uh, as we move into our, our special meeting.
Norman, I, we will by that point, uh, have protocols from shipmen. And yeah, I don't know if Tom Mooney has talked to you about that, but we did have some conversation that, um, just kind of the after conversation when we caucused with Pete Mar. And I think we all left there feeling better about some stronger language and, um, uh, just, um, expectations on the part of the school for mask wearing for everyone that we can stand behind and enforce.
Good. Now I'll see if I can reach out to Tom tomorrow. If he's available, answer the phone.
That's great.
I know he's been a busy guy.
So are you anticipating there'll be other items other than the mask policy on the policy agenda at 5:30?
I think there were two, there was an item or two from the last time. I don't have that in front of me at this point. But.
Okay.
Let me look at them if they are, uh, urgent. Let's put them on. If not, we can have a conversation and just fill up the half hour.
All right.
Unless there's objection to that?
No, there isn't. I was just wondering if we shouldn't meet earlier at five, it's going to be a lot. But if we can get it in a half hour, I'm great with the 5:30.
I don't have a problem meeting at five either. And if we finish early, you can get a cold beverage.
Want to go with five?
We'll set up the meeting for.
As the committee, most of the committee is already here, so.
Yeah. How did, how did people feel? Bob, what, you were, you were commenting, I'm sorry.
No, I just said we'll set it up for five and then, you know, I.
Set it for five.
The mask issue.
That's good.
And the enforcement is an issue, you know, I think the enforcement of the mask is what we leave to the school and what, what our requirements are and how much we support is going to be more complex than 10 minutes.
Good. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Um, could I just ask, because I won't be able to make the policy committee meeting, could we just get some better, I'm sure between the attorney and what was released today for students with disabilities with wearing masks? Because there's a lot of obviously kids with disabilities who might not have a medical exemption, but have severe behavior disorders like a defiance disorder where the kid is not going to wear a mask. And, you know, how are we going to accommodate those children? I think we should have some better language for students with disabilities in the policy.
I agree.
Thanks.
Uh, not knowing that I'm talking in an area that I don't have any real basis of knowledge, but is that something we could handle through having it incorporated in an IEP for the student, that this particular student would be better served without the mask? And just doing it on an individual basis, is that a, is that appropriate or inappropriate? I, I don't know if that's a.
I think we'll get some guidance on that. Bob, and yeah, I, I'll, I'll let you know. I could, would imagine that it would be in an IEP. But we'll get some more information on that for sure.
You know what, Kath, I can get some information. I'm meeting with my governing board tomorrow. And if anybody knows about, uh, special needs and special education, they do.
Yeah, and, and Pete had said that we could anticipate it, I think, Bob, he's, they, he thought maybe on Monday. But I would imagine we'll see something this week.
Great. So let me dive in, uh, and hopefully we get a really good mask policy for that meeting. The next item is student achievement. Victor, Lucy, you want to give us your quick report?
I have a paper. Did you have a too, Victor? I'll go ahead. Uh, we have three, three books that Cory had asked us to approve. One of it, one is for Latin for grades seven and eight. I'll just give you just a brief thing about it. This will be helpful for students in and out of distance learning, especially during distance learning. Uh, the title of it is Elevate Platform. It's an engaging storyline that follows a Roman fam- family in Pompeii. The cost is 15.75 and $15.75. The features are resources, videos, vocabulary, grammatical practice, interactive stories, searchable glossary and extensive links to related topics. There are two other books. They're both related to algebra. We have an Algebra I honors for grades eight and nine. The cost, which is probably the whole package, is $130.75, which includes a six-year online subscription. The title is College Prep Algebra. The features are supplemental learning resources, diagnostic tests, video lessons, enhanced web assigned, which allows teachers to assign individualized homework or assignments and provide students with immediate feedback, tutors and interactive ebook. There's student resources on note-taking guides and test prep for SAT, as well as it's aligned with common core state standards. And the third book, The Algebra II Honors for grades 10 and 11. The cost is $199 and it also includes a six-year online subscription. The title is College Algebra and the features are, uh, pretty much like the other ones, supplemental learning resources, diagnostic tests, video lessons, the enhanced web design for individualized homework and assessments, which provides student feedback, tutors and an interactive ebook. There's, uh, student resources on note-taking guides, uh, access to kengaugebrian.com, which provides access to all course materials, student version of teacher materials. There's interdisciplinary lessons and real-world problems and it's aligned, also aligned with the common core standards. So there's a Latin book for grades seven and eight, Algebra I honors for grades eight, nine, Algebra II honors for grades 10 and 11.
And a motion to approve those? Lucy?
So.
I'll make that motion to approve these three books.
I'll second.
Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, thank you. Anything else on student achievement? Thank you. The next item is communications. I've gotten some. Got a very good letter from David Booth about, uh, immural sports and eliminating competitive sports in the middle school. Got a letter from Kim Davis, um, before and after school at Dolphin Days. And a question from Nick Fiala on, uh, this utilization committee in terms of space at the high school and corn school. And I've answered his letter and I said it was also sent to Bob. I think they just sent that out tonight. So that's all I have. Lots of discussions from board chairs and variety of other meetings. Kind of some rights, ones that are important. Other communications?
Bob, I'd like to, I'd like to put a plug in for graduation, if I might. It was, uh, nothing short of spectacular for under the, under the circumstances. Uh, it was in two sections, uh, basically alphabetically. It was very brief, but it was incredibly moving. Uh, I've been to 25 graduations in a row and, uh, this is in the top four. Uh, I sent that, I sent that in a letter to, uh, Kathy Sereno and Brian Falcon, Beth Bilalow and Amy Jakes-Purdy, who really kind of put that all together. But each student was allowed two people and, uh, everybody was social distanced. And, uh, when one group was getting their diplomas, the other group was sitting in the bleachers six feet apart. And, uh, it was so incredibly respectful that, um, uh, I, I was very moved. So I just want the rest of the board to hear that and, and applaud Kathy, Brian, Beth and Amy for just a superb job. And, and putting that together, it, it reminded me of the graduation we had at Wesleyan that kind of motivated us going outside. And, uh, that was put together by Kathy and, and her team in literally 12 hours. And, uh, I was just, uh, I'm just happy to, to report that. I, I don't think it could have gone any better under the circumstances. So, uh, thanks to all those people.
I wasn't there, but Jennifer Shilton put a ton of pictures on Facebook from the graduation. And you really, you could feel through the pictures, all the emotion and, and just how wonderful it was. I wish I had been there, but it was, it, it was very well captured in the pictures. So it had to be there to be captured.
Yeah, Jen was everywhere that night. Um, and, uh, And I think one of the greatest pictures was the, she had a drone. She put a drone up in the air and the picture of, of the whole, the whole scene was just quite remarkable.
Just one other thing, Norm, I want to know. I got an email from Tim Fisher this morning. And, you know, I had emailed him and told him how much it meant to us to have him at graduation. And he just, you know, said how thrilled he was to be able to be there and to be able to, and to be recognized by the students and the staff. And I just think that it's, you know, it's a hallmark of District 13. The kind of compassion and support that this district has for each other.
Yeah, I think, I think, and I probably should put a plug in for core ethical values, too, because those were evident.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. And don't forget Todd Petronio, who was a huge part of organizing that as well.
I knew there was, there was somebody I left out when I set my notes, so.
That's okay, thank you. Thanks for reaching out with that.
In addition, the custodial staff cleaned all the chairs and all the devices in between each graduation. And as you look out over the graduation with the blue stripe down the middle on the parent, each side of the kids, it probably made graduation more special for the parents than having them all stand up in front, looking at, looking at them when they sit next to them. That'd be a process that would be easier as well. Any other communications? Thank you, Kim?
Yes, just last week, the governor has announced $160 million in additional funding for schools. That, however, is based on a competitive grant process rather than an entitlement. So the Ether Funds are an entitlement grant that's typically based on a formula. This is a competitive grant whereby it undergoes review and is awarded based by determination of the committee. So having said that, we will apply for it. Not sure how much funds we will be, will be entitled to. The end-of-year surplus, as I previously reported at prior meetings, remains at about the $791,000. And that was a little bit more because of the closed purchase orders, you'll recall. And the preliminary audit work is being done now. There's been some work that they spent done about a couple of weeks ago, and we're still in touch, probably on a weekly basis, coming out again in October, hopefully in person, to do some, some more fieldwork. So that number is still an unaudited number. But where we stand is at 96% expended and 96, 98, no, sorry, 99% of our revenue has been received. The only difference with the financials that are in the packet tonight for 1920 are that it includes the 13th period. And you may recall, 13th period are just simply expenses that were incurred in June but not paid until July, such as utilities, legal fees, any kind of, you know, any kind of expense that gap, general accepted accounting principle says, gets recorded back in the month that they were actually incurred and not that they were paid. So that's the only difference between today's 13th period financials and the ones that I submitted earlier in the month. You will also see that the, there's a July 2021, our first year in July financials included in the packet. And that's for our new budget. We are 6.67% spent in the month of July. And that is in the categories of salaries. We have summer school, extended school year, and 12-month staff salaries. Benefits, we have health insurance, workers' comp, course reimbursement. Under the area of 300, purchased services. We have made our first progress payment on the audit, payment on the superintendent's search, as well as extensive yearly building inspections take place in the month of July. These are all encumbered funds, but just things that we typically do in the month of July. We had 400 purchased property services repaired. We had the Coggins Chog basketball and tennis courts repaired in July. They totaled about $77,000. And then we also had some lease payments under that category. Just flipping over my paper here. 500, the insurance. We paid our property insurance in the month of July, $110,000. 600, line item is supplies. We purchased some COVID supplies, some classroom supplies, and some books. Under 700, property, we transferred the $254,000 to the capital reserve, per the budget. And we had $73,000 in software renewals, such as IEP, ASAP Lobby Guard, Infinite Visions, that such and so things. 800 is due, so we had memberships to CAPE Caps and the Ask. And then in 900, we had our debt payment, one of our debt payments. So that's the expenses that we incurred in July. Up for August, I just want to mention, we had had a sprinkler system go down, fire panel, I'm sorry, fire panel at Booster. Report was it may have been struck by lightning. And that made a bunch of the fire heads, the heat sensors fail as well. Then fixed to the tune of probably about $10,000, kind of a, kind of heavy hit. I'm gonna be looking into a potential insurance claim for that if it was a lightning strike to see what, if we can recoup any of that. And in addition to that, with the storm damage from the recent storm, the shelter will be handled through FEMA, through the town. Not through us specifically. However, we do have trees down on a play escape. We have trees down in a couple areas. So we're gonna look into that insurance claims versus FEMA. I know FEMA is typically last resort, so we may be compelled to have to go through our insurance first. So that's something that I'm in the process of looking at. I just want to see if I missed any of my notes here. No, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? If not, I did get a CAPE bill came directly to me. I think Mike probably gave it to you. Okay, great. If that, next item is public comment. Ken, do we have public comment?
There's two callers. First one, just raised their hand. If anyone does wish to speak, please remember to dial *9 to indicate that. We're gonna call on phone number that ends in 6384. Please state your name and town before speaking.
This is Juan Stefan from Durham. I just wanted to add publicly, in a public forum, I guess, our deepest gratitude from the parents of the class of 2020. And really extend our thank you and our deepest gratitude to Brian Falcone and his staff, Beth Malillo, Amy Jakes-Purdy, Todd Petronio, and Chris, and Jeff, Jeff, and Paul. It truly was the most wonderful experience for our graduate. And we so appreciate how closely stuck by your students. You truly made them the focus of your plans for graduation, despite public comment, despite all the emails you probably got. You really pushed through with the students in mind. And so their parents deeply gratitude to you for that. I'm getting emotional because it truly was an emotional ending for this class. So thank you to Brian and his staff.
Thank you, Juan. Any other comments?
Yes, we've got one more. The last four of the phone number is 8021. Please state your name and town before you comment.
This is Candace Barrett, and I'm in Durham. Juan, I have one question. Is the survey results gonna come out of what everybody chose? Because a lot of other towns have shown what the surveys of the parents had chosen. It would be nice if we got to see what percentage wanted, what type of schooling. The other thing is with the hybrid, it's actually gonna cause more cohorts. Dolphin Days currently has six first graders with different last names. They've been together since March. They're now gonna be in class two days, different cohorts. And then on Wednesdays, they'll all be together again. My twins are already scheduled for different teachers. So if you're trying to minimize cohorts, how is the hybrid the best way to do it? And that doesn't seem to have factored in and hasn't been explained. You're just saying we're going with the cohort, or the hybrid, but it's actually creating more cohorts.
Candace, can I call you tomorrow? It's Kathy Sereno. Do you mind if I just give you...
Not at all. But I really would like the survey results to come out because a lot of people in the town on Facebook have wanted to see them.
So the survey wasn't about people getting to choose what they wanted? It wasn't like it was a vote about what they wanted?
Well, that was a miscommunication, then, because I think pretty much that's what the entire town thought.
You know, maybe I can clarify that in the next parent communication, that it really was more about your intention to send your child. And when, when, you know, we were, we were fully opening because that was the directive from, from the governor and from the State Department of Education. So when we first sent the survey, it was really just to say, you know, would you send your child if we reopen fully? And then we asked, you know, just because we knew there was a potential for us to go to hybrid. If we were in hybrid, would you send your child? And then, once given the opportunity to make the decision, we made that decision. And, and it was, you know, for a number of reasons, but, but including...
And I, listen, listen, I understand because of the storm, those reasons weren't able to be explained prior to the decision. But it kind of would have been nice had those reasons came prior to the email for all the parents on Friday saying you guys were going that way. Because I know if you guys are on Facebook, you've seen the whole thing that's been happening. It's not just me, it's not just Nicole. There is a lot of parents that are upset about it. They just aren't vocal.
Thank you very much, Candace and Kathy, for your call. Any other comments, Ken?
All right, no other callers.
There's no other callers, you have a motion to adjourn?
No more?
Wait a second?
Second.
Did you have something to say?
No, I was saying, "and".
All in favor? Aye.
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 I see probably most of you sometime before next week, anyway, for some other meeting. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.